Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council Work Meeting. Today is October 20th, 2025, and the time is 6:31. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspapers in performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Camalaro?
Here.
Ramona?
Present.
Rockland?
Present.
Overste.
Right.
Bettis?
Present.
Swenson? Thomas?
Present.
Six and a ten.
For the record, Ms. Swenson will not be here to speak here. Now, for approval of previous minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Ms. Nunes?
Yes.
Can you get the best practice review?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So best practices has been done for the past 15 years. Every year, they add new items to see how municipalities are doing within that category. So we are at 100% point-wise, so we don't lose any of our transitional or, excuse me, any of the aid that we get from the state. This is on a point system. We did exceed their point system, so we keep our stating at 100%. This year, a lot of the items that they are honing on is budget preparation, financial administration, ethics, lead remediation, since we do have a lead remediation program with the county, and we have staff here that does that, too. They're also asked about opportunity zone. We have an opportunity zone that's coming up, I believe, at the end of 2026 to be up it. So they're looking for companies in our community to see who could be interested in the development for the tax credits. They also talked about redevelopment to see where we are with our redevelopment and if anybody's interested about county and keeping some of these long-term exemptions. And they talked also about shared service agreement, where we are and what we have done. So we do have a shared service agreement, actually related to corporate challenges with construction official and IT services. And they're talking about also transparency. And it's about a 70-page questionnaire. Some of these survey questions are unscored, because what they do is they'll bring up a topic. If it's new, it's unscored. Then next year, based, I guess, on the responses that they get throughout the state from other municipalities, they'll start asking scored questions. So right now, we did great. We are within the point system that we need to stay in to maintain our stating.
Anyone have that number?
We have energy receipts. It's about, I don't know, it's the only state aid that we have. It's about, I would like to say, $1.2 million a year. I can't remember the exact state budget number.
No, what's the number?
Oh, for our scoring?
Yes.
We scored 33? I'm sorry, 34 out of 32.
What?
I'm sorry.
32 out of 31.
Yes, I meant to say yes. And some of the points were, some of these questions or survey questions were unscored, so that does not affect us either.
Any questions, council? Thanks, Ms. Nunes.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have agenda review. Matt, before?
First, we have work is number 14, second reading, public hearing. We'll be down during breakfast session. It's a mini chapter 215 in Title 1, Control of the City.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Has Luke 185 authorized in the mayor clerk to execute a federal aid agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation?
Any questions, council? Can you come up and left read a little bit on this one, please?
Sure. Okay, this one, is this Resolution 185?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, this was a grant that was given to the city of Pleasantville for the Black Horse Pike Base 2, and we were awarded $612,000. Not only is this grant coming from the Department of Transportation, but its funding, the original funding, is coming from the Federal Highway Administration Commission. And so their paperwork requirement is just slightly different from DOT. We have submitted this grant back in 2023, I believe it was. And this time around, what they did, they submitted the contracts to be signed, and they were signed, and part of their packet missed the resolution that they were supposed to submit to us in their language and their wording for us to proceed with this resolution. That's why it's, and it's a grant requirement, too. So this is why we're doing this now.
Thank you. Matt, clerk?
Has Luke 186 authorized in the addition of bus stops on county roads for access shuttle services in the city?
Any questions, council?
What, our own shuttle, our own Pleasantville shuttle, or what access? Is this access link?
Access link.
But because I don't believe that Tilton Road in Pleasantville is a county road, so there'll be no access to that. So it'll be California, Delilah, and Washington. And Washington is not a bus stop either. So it'll just be the two with the north end that are in, that use the bus.
I don't know what you're saying. It's shared service agreement. It's two along the all the same? Stops are two along West Washington? It says.
I was in West Washington for 23 years, I never saw a bus.
Yes, because I don't think that it's required to be on a county road.
But it says stops on county roads for access.
Well, they created this, but, you know.
It wasn't any backups. It was given to the mayor and mayor of the chair.
Sure.
But what occurred here is that they have revised some of the roads. So some of the roads that even though the buses don't run on these roads, some of these roads in Pleasantville have been revised to be county roads. And I believe Washington may be one, even though a bus doesn't.
Washington has been.
Yeah, but even though a bus doesn't go down, they want it constituted as for the sake of, just for access link, establishing it for it to be a stop. Yeah, not so much for transit, per se, coming down these roads, but just for access. Yeah.
Because you have to be within a three-quarters of a mile of a bus stop for access link to be able to do it.
Yeah, so they would like for this to be in a resolution.
All right, any? Any other questions? And what?
No, nothing else. Resolution 187 authorized in advertisement requesting qualifications for rent control board attorney.
Any questions? CNN?
Resolution 188 authorized in advertisement requesting proposal for civil service human resources.
Any questions? CNN?
Resolution 199 authorized emergency repair of fence damage at the Max Manning Complex located at Park Avenue.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 190 endorsing the draft urban enterprise zone five-year prestigious plan and authorizing a plan to be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for approval.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 191 awarding professional services contract to Dan Zicker, Mark Hall, attorneys at law, for the 2024 retiring medical actuarial evaluation.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 192 authorized professional service contract to CME engineers for zoning ordinances reviewed pursuant to NJSA 40A11-1.
Any questions, council?
Where is this funding going to come out of? Whether it's zoning or these reviews? And is there a cap on it or anything?
Because this is something new. They haven't done this before, right?
Thank you. This is from 2024.
The? The zoning of these ordinances, this one was the one I came through the planning and development committee. That one is earmarked to come out of the grant funds that was left over and the city's funds from UEC, and it's approximately, I believe, $12,000, I think, $9,500, I believe.
Is left in the fund, that's?
No, that's not what's left. This is what I was able to get it from. Usually, planning and zoning, they do have a budget line item, but there hasn't been enough money over the years to always cover for the professional services that they require. So slowly, we're moving, you know, $500 here when we can and adding it to the budget. But this was, I believe, a $9,500 proposal that CME submitted, and that is coming, that's being funded out of leftover money from the first round of UEC funding. The more it was reinstated, I believe, that in 2020.
Is that a UEC funding? How sorry to say? Fire?
Jay.
What I think the root of this is that in our zoning planning board, we have some ambiguous, if you will, language that is causing problems with applicants being processed. I figured you would love that.
So should I go, yes, or no?
This is what you want, I think. I didn't want to, but you're out of yourself. But so that's what this is about. We asked to clean up some of those problems. So the applicants, you know, the staff person is just interpreting what's in black and white. And so they don't have the authority to keep people happy. You got applicants bombing man cursing them off. So we want to try to get that straightened out. The committee proposed that, so that's what this is about.
So just to be clear, when UEC was closed or shut down, I believe, back in 2010, 2011, all of that money came back to the city and has been used in various projects, including for services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, clerk?
Resolution 193 providing for budgets to search into the 2025 budget.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 194 authorized personnel transactions in the city for October 2025.
Any questions, council? CNN?
With that resolution?
Yeah, well, this is, we don't go into it like possession for one. We do an evidence. No, in any, ever. At the end. Thank you.
The bills? Okay. All right, so you have two bill lists, one that has paid items, and that's basically a one-pager. You want to look at it, that one. And it says checks to register by check date on the top. So on here, we have Alana City Electric, that's to keep up with our electric bills, for $50,677.62. New Jersey American Water, that covers several of our buildings and water usage for $54,833.22. And then the next item is, of course, City Paillock, And then we have the bill list that we seek your approval for payment. It's a 19-page, I tried to commodize pages or do double-side print, so.
I don't like this.
You didn't do, okay, all right. So we have on page one, McCarthy Tire, $909.12. If you flip over to page two, we have Acme Lingo flag poles of $4,150.25.
Do we have that many flag poles? Is it, well, okay. And I know I thought you had, I don't want big ones hot. But can we find somebody, the public works, go out and actually find out if these flag poles are actually ours or if this is our?
Yes, Kyrie's here. Kyrie, come sit and call me, please. I'm going to run you up on the whole.
Thank you. Yes. I've closed Memorial Park, Wells and Avenue, PD, City Hall. They never made this. So all the mechanisms inside of them, across the sphere, as, well, in France, PD, all the mechanisms are broken. We've maintenance it, we try and replace things, and all of these flag poles, we're to a point now that we have to do maintenance. So you have the three at the Memorial Park, one on Walton, public works, one here, one in the fire. They all get done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're continuing on page three, Down Inc., and this is $16,665.12, and this is software and hurdles for the police department.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Because you have $2,571.04 attributed to library security.
Yes.
What is that?
That's actually the line item that I used to purchase the computer at the clerk's office.
And you're allocating it to library?
And I'm using that line item, correct, because as we're getting closer to the end of the year, we're having funds are dwindling. And instead of having choppy six or seven line items to add to the 25, I charted against the library security, which we no longer have to pay security because that contract with the library expired, or we did not renew it. I think it was back in April or May.
So we're not going to have a security library?
No, they do, the counties take it.
So there was money left over?
Yes.
Funding for that? How much money was left over for that?
Um, like about, I would like to say, $10,000?
Because there are a couple other ones that are attributed to the same thing. There's another one for about $700. There's one that is, well, one is for over $13,000. So you're over budget right there.
Well, the account is not in red.
The what?
The account is not in red. So I, because I don't know these numbers by heart as they move from day to day, week to week, month to month, as we purchase. So if I had the budget document here telling me what was available, I would be able to do that, but I don't.
So this is the last time that that is going to be used? Because, I mean, is there like $20,000 in that budget right now? To be able to?
Yes, ma'am.
Use these?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, let's see, there's another one for $828. You know, like they say, a couple million here, a couple million there. Now you're talking about real money, right? So if there's not a lot of money in that fund, we've just probably exhausted that fund right now.
No, it's not exhausted. I can, if you would like, I can forward to you.
Well, don't forward it, because my email.
Okay. In her mailbox, I can do that. One of the things that I do want you to keep in mind, this budget should cover for anything and everything that was put in. And one of the things that I don't like to do, and I did find that, and as you can see, in November, December, we transfer funds, is to, in over encumbered funds. If it's not in your account, you're not going to get it.
Well, if this is a shared service with the county, and I'm just asking this because do they pay half the money for the security and we pay half the money? Or is it all on us?
All at that, up until the county took over, they have a new company. It was, from what I understand, it was all on us.
I'm just trying to look five minutes down the line because I don't want the county coming back to us and saying, you owe us for half of the money that we left in here in the shared service agreement for security.
Well, we do have a contract for that. Yes, we do have a contract in place, and that contract no longer is valid being so that they took on the security and we don't have to pay.
So what I can do is, if you would like, I can gather that information and place it in your mailbox.
Please, please.
Councilor Lynn Bettis has the question.
Jim, wouldn't it be more practical from a county standpoint and history to transfer, once that count, once that responsible is no longer there, to transfer that money to those accounts that you're spending it out so that when we put together the next budget, the budget is relative to that function or that purpose, you will have a true experience?
Yes, and that is the ultimate goal.
Instead of putting those up against that, I just think that's not a good practice from experience.
Well, if you look on how the budgets were spent here in prior years, it's not something that, what we're, we're working towards improving our charges.
I understand that, I'm just, but that, that.
The trips for, I hear what you're saying, transfers legally by statute can only happen for the current year budget, for 2025 can only happen in November.
Line item transfer.
Yes, yes, it can only happen in November and December. So throughout the year, I am not able to do that.
Well, we're almost there. That's what.
Yeah, in November.
Well, while, so again, it's, this is October. And I, I think what's going to happen is that when we start looking at next year's budget, we're going to be looking at those accounts with a false experience.
And that's what I inherited, and I'm trying to work on that.
I understand, but, well, we start now?
Actually, we're sending budget information by the end of this week to the departments.
Don't forget my 10%. It's 10%.
I got you, I remember that. So it's going to, it's a learning curve for everyone here. For me, I'm used to doing this, but if.
Well, you, as a CFO, I think you have to put the hammer down on what other people are doing. That's a bad habit.
Right.
But it's, it's just not good management. It doesn't give you true information, or doesn't give us valid information so that we can make decisions on policy, etc. That's all.
Sure, pointing.
Thank you.
So if you look at page four? We're looking.
We're going to do every page?
Um, I, we can do, I can.
You can skip around. I mean, something.
What's that? Okay, so we have on page four, Alana City Electric, $3,300, $3,292.20. We have from the ACUA, $840,000.578.56. Okay, if we go to page seven, we have W Mason for all the supplies, and that was $1,255.83. You are looking at, excuse me.
Did we ever need $32? It's detailed.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, now.
Page 10, we have Tactical Public Safety LLC, and this is for their microphones, radio repair, batteries, and that's $2,203.20. We are looking at page 13 for Lexical LLC, $1,911 even, and that's a platform that DMS and FIRE use. We look at page 16. We are looking at Verizon for our phone and internet service. It's $1,391.59. The, if you look at the following, page 17, you have Nutriserve Food Management, That is the breakfast and lunch, comes through a grant for the summer camp at the recreation center. Then you have, I didn't circle anything in the last one because it was a lower amount. So, anyone have any other questions about the bill list?
On some of the medical reimbursement, I want to call them. There are amounts that are covered for three months in advance. And I've noticed that, but reimbursement, how do we pay in advance if there's a reimbursement? I always thought reimbursement was past tickets.
And it is, I don't, we would know even if it was an advanced payment. And what happens is, we don't pay reimbursements in advance because that also comes out of our health benefit line item. Unless if something was miswritten in the description?
It's, it's on page 20, third item from the top, 57897. It's three months ago, it's into January 20.
Okay, I will look into that. I apologize.
I've seen those before, I think I'd usually call them in that year.
So I will look into that, so. So I will look into that, so. Can you let all of us know the answer to that? Absolutely. Anyone have anything else?
I did observe an extensive amount of training, uh, in a couple of departments. I'm, I'm not sure about the process. It looks like a lot of money for training all at one time, particularly in one department. Is that because, uh, is that money in the budget? That's my, that's my concern. Those training, or those courses in the budget, the, with all them folks, they all went, the, all the bills came in the same time? Did they all go to training the same time? I might, I'll ask, you'll have to answer that, but-
Thank you.
It's a thought, but who's working it? Anyway, Mr. VA, that's, that's one for you.
So what's up and I'm preventing you?
Just a general, just a general officer.
Anyone else have questions? Anyone from council that have anything else, they wanna add? Let it hurt, okay?
Good evening, everyone, this is the city council meeting, today's October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five. And if you want to close one session, oh, yeah, right. Madam, who took the first? All in favor? Thank you. I'm ready to start over again. This is the city council meeting, today's October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is seven oh four. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Please stand for invocation and flag salute, and then we have a moment of silence for Councilwoman Swenson, who lost her five, uh, three days ago. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more, please, chairman. Kamala?
Here.
Kamala?
Present.
Bartley?
Present.
Aldous Speaker?
Present.
Bettis?
Present.
Swenson? Thomas?
Present.
Six attendants. May I have a motion to dispass previous members?
Motion.
Man of the second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Next, we have public portion, Mr. Tim Jones.
Actually, I wanted to speak on the rent control ward, should I speak on it now or are you gonna have a hearing portion for it now?
There's a hearing, but he's, I mean, you know, he's not restricted, but you're just not going to present anything. If you have a comment, you'd like to-
Right, it's just kind of, no, no presentation.
Okay. Can you make the comment?
Yes, okay, I have. I have to reset myself here a little bit. Um, I did look over the, um, the changes, um, in the, um, rent control ward instead of being proposed. And, um, what I could derive from it, I see is that the, um, the structure's being changed such that it's being basically taken out of the traditional kind of structure where the mayor appoints persons to the board, such as to the planning board and the zoning board, and putting that solely in the hands of city council. That's my interpretation of what I read. Um, is that correct?
So that's it? Your, your, your question may be resolved when you get to the hearing portion of it, number one. Number two, zoning and planning are statutory, okay? This is not, so this is within the purview of council to do as they please, but I think that the issue that you are inquiring about has been addressed.
Okay.
Okay, and, and so if you wanna, we, since which time we get to the, to, to the second reading, you may find that it was, it's addressed.
Thank you, but I'll, I'll wait then.
Okay.
Next, we have Santos.
Good evening. Good evening. I just wanna do a follow-up, um, on some of the issues, you know, that have been here before in the past, and none of them being taken care of. And one of them is, you know, the amount of people that's living in some of the houses. What is being done, you know, with that?
Are we still talking about trolls there?
Yeah, yeah.
So what's the question?
What is being done, you know, on the amount of people that's living in some of the houses? They are overlooked. Living the resident without parking? I mean, I work here, sometime I have to come look for parking, it's police.
Are they parking in your driveway?
No, they park in the street.
Just a party home?
Yep.
So I know-
The whole situation is, you know, I've been there since nineteen ninety, I built my house there. It's nineteen ninety, I never had that problem before, you know? The problem is coming because there's too many people living in some of the houses. It isn't legal. But, you know, now, the other question is, you know, I thought it was a code for the city. That those people who rent, it's supposed to get a penalty.
Oh, so it's supposed to get a what?
It's supposed to get a penalty from code enforcement so they can come, the inspector can come, you know, and they can do the inspection. And I don't think I've seen that.
Mr. Santos, um, I know you have been here before and, you know, you had similar, uh, concerns. I think that this is an issue for, um, our VA. Uh, I think that he needs to get to a call, or if you can wait, you can talk after the meeting.
You know me, when I come here, I come, I'm supposed to be and work.
Oh, you wanna leave?
I have, I have to leave.
Can you give your phone number to Mark Carter, please?
Sure.
I appreciate you.
Good night.
Thank you, good night. Next, we have Ms. Wendy Brown.
Um, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, two days ago I went to Wawa in the evening, and they closed the store down. And they closed the store down because they were having a football game at the hospital. And they said the last time they had a football game, the kids came in there, they were fighting and vandalizing, the store was like still, so now they just shut the store down. I don't know what we can do about it, I don't know if they called a reporter there, I don't know, but I don't report it. Because, um, if they're doing that, the next step is closing the store down. So that means we will lose another business, another, I don't know what you can do about it. Maybe somebody can address the superintendent and see what she can do about it, or talk to police, or whoever has talked to them. Um, that was my main thing that I wanted to say. But I also see here that y'all, um, are talking about hiring a lawyer for the rent control ward. I also see something in here about salary increases and employee status, disauthorized personnel transaction to the city for October twenty twenty-five, approval of payout salary increases and employment status. So, um, I don't know who's getting the raises, or like, who's, what are, who are you talking about? So, um, I would like to answer for that, and I'd like to know if, according to the, the meeting we had here, um, with the PVA, and they said that they were getting like a hundred or two or a hundred or three calls a day, and we needed X amount of police, um, if that's the case, um, I would think that more police would be working at night than in the daytime, not the same amount, which as I, as far as I've been told, there's only five. I don't know where the rest of them are.
You said only five police officers are working at night?
Five cars on the street, five cars on the street. I know it takes over an hour to get a response, 'cause I called. So, um, I'm just trying to figure out, you have forty-eight officers, you only have two shifts, twelve-hour shifts each, like, where's everybody at? So those are the things that I wanted to address anybody in answer.
So, um, the police issue, I guess, you wanna answer that?
Well, deployment of officers is up to the chief of the police department. Uh, our committee has expressed our concerns in reference to your question, but that's up to the chief for the deployment, and the mayor.
Well, don't you have a responsibility to your community's safety? Because if you're having a hundred or three calls a day, you only have five police out. They have five cars out, one officer in a car. That's five police on, boots on the ground, that's it, five people, day and night, two twelve-hour shifts, yet you have forty-eight police officers. And I'm asking you, are they all on vacation at the same time? Are they all on workers' comp at the same time? How long have they been out, when are they coming back? And how long will ke- do we have to be in this unsafe situation?
Well, as chairman of the public safety committee, I'll say this. We have provided our department with necessary, uh, officers, we have several officers in the academy right now, paying to hire five more. The deployment, again, let's say, is up to the chief and the mayor, as I said earlier. The committee has concerns in reference to the deployment of officers, and we addressed, and we have brought up. So that question, if you like, well, I'll be fair about it, you can ask that at the mayor's committee or her, uh, duty, or her ward meeting, or you can, uh, make an appointment with the chief. Per the statute, and we can only do so much besides change our ordinance, which have been considered. So right now, our hands are tied as far as the deployment, and actually, there's only five officers in the street. That's the chief and the mayor's call, it's not, it's not the public safety committees. So in order for us to change that, we have to change our ordinance and the policy. Let's say if we want seven officers, now, why we want them, as the suggestion was, that we want our attendants to work on each shift, or we want them to work at night? All that has been brought up in several meetings, and by time it's been taken, so we actually feel the same way either. That question would actually have to be addressed to the chief and the mayor.
Well, I, as a person, I have asked one of those people that you're talking about. In fact, I've asked two other people, and I can't get no answers, so I'm bringing it to y'all because-
And I'm, I'm just- I can't hate.
And it's heard from concern, right? So, Ms. Brown, so what we'll do is, they'll bring back your concern when they are in front of the chief and the mayor, and then they'll have the discussion, and someone will get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay, what are we gonna do about only having two code enforcement officers? One for the north side and one for the south side? 'Cause I'm here to tell you, I took pictures all summer, I called everybody, I asked everybody, and I almost had a head-on collision on the corner of Linden and Adams Avenue, because you can't see around it all, from the bushes that was up there. Nobody cut anything that I could see this year, not, not on that corner.
So I-
And, and others. So do you plan to hire more code enforcement officers so that the, the city can be safer? And then, and also, uh, with that, like the gentleman was saying, all these people living in one house and, like, do we have COs that match what's in the house because it's a lot of people and a lot of rats and no parking?
So I know you brought up the same issues before.
I keep bringing them up, you're right.
Right. Uh, you may be losing my train of thought. Oh, oh, I was gonna say, but for the record, we do have more than two code enforcement officers, and we are, uh, I'm gonna say, three?
One.
Four, okay, we have four, and we are looking to hire others, but we did bring that up in committee, so we are pushing on that.
Okay, 'cause we really need that, nothing but being dumped off the trailers on the corner. You still can't see around the corner when you're driving on the way to work. They still have the trailers, they still put the cones out, all that kind of stuff, you can't get nobody going. My street, the dumpsters been sitting in front, in the middle of the block, on the curb for maybe the last month, and it's full, so nobody's emptying it. I wanna know, like, is somebody gonna do something out there?
Can, can I, and I agree with you. My thought process is less hiring of police officers, because when the police officers start out, you get a lot of grant funding or safety grants and everything, but when those grants are done, and in five years, they're making a hundred thousand dollars. If we hire, if, if they wanna hire five police officers, we could hire ten code officials for the same amount, which we're not gonna hire ten. But we could, the more code officials we have, probably the less police that we need, because they could be doing these things, like the gentleman with no parking, with too many people living in an apartment, or too many people living in a house that is not inspected, that's not up to code, that has no CO for it. So if we had more people on the ground, much like people say we need more police, we need more code, because that would take some of the onus off the police officers if we had more people to do code enforcement, because that's one of our biggest problems in the city.
I'm not opposed to that at all, Julie, I'm not-
And, and it would be a cost saver.
Yes, and it would make, generate money for the city.
Right.
So I'm not opposed to that at all.
So, um, that- It's an excellent point, however, please consider that each one of the code enforcement officers on shift gonna need a car. So if I put ten code enforcement officers on the street, I'm gonna need ten cars, or-
Well, how many do we have? Not just cars, they ride rental trucks too.
Right now, we have three cars, and one is not, um, it's not, I think, uh, Mr. Perry, I think, did you guys fix that one here? It was still in the story, it was, it's still in the, so, yeah, so.
Well, you can put two, just like they can put two officers in a police car, which they don't do, they put the two officers in those cars and in those trucks.
We have four code enforcement officers, and that's what we do, we share them. Uh, so you're right, that's-
'Cause they need trucks as well as cars, and you have one car out.
We have two vehicles that are operating right now for, for that department. So like I said, we would have to go out and purchase more cars, and we would have to, you know, of course, hire, um, the personnel, which we're working around, we're, we're figuring the whole thing out. We do have a plan, that plan has to be, um, probably as to, um, for twenty twenty-six budget. That's what we're working on.
So we are aware of-
Very, very much aware, we're, we're a hundred percent in agreement with you, but we're working, we do have a plan.
Okay.
So someone, if, if you-
Somebody's wanting to back to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanna know, because, um, it's getting really hard, it's getting difficult. And like that man said, he's right, you don't have a, if my husband didn't put cones out when I'm, it's time for me to come home from work, I wouldn't have no way to park. Two, three, maybe four blocks away, and Pleasantville don't have no lights. Everybody else is doing it. The people with the trailers are doing it. There's still a trailer signal on First Street, right in front of Civic Hall, that's been out there for all summer long. Still signaling, do they ever see anything?
And councilman Promont, that actually attests that he and I actually gone out there a number of times, we've reported it a number of times, we've had people go out and, you know, serve, you know, tickets and stuff like that. The other day, there was nothing, and I think today, there was one between there, right? Was it one?
Yes, one, there's two of them.
Now, normally, there was, what, seven, eight, you know, things here, but earlier today, when I came in, there was nothing, it was zero. But earlier today, when I came in, there was nothing, it was zero. He was, I should go on, I met this morning, and he complimented my great work without the vehicles there. Then at night, you know, yeah, yeah, two vehicles back there, so...
Well, some of them are out there in the daytime.
But that was before, we, like, that's what I'm saying.
Not before, right now. Not before, right now, I leave for work...
We service them.
Before seven-thirty in the morning, and those trucks are out there before seven-thirty in the morning.
Yeah, it's obviously someone's business.
Some of them think you're...
Yeah.
One ninety-four. Resilience one ninety-four question.
Time, that's how it goes.
No, you just have to give the answer, already she already answered the question. Resilience one ninety-four.
All the answers, yes.
Salary increases?
Yeah, who the salary increases and for... And raises and... The reason why I'm asking this question, let me, let me be clear. The reason why I'm asking this question is because I don't feel like the money at Pleasantville is being spent as well as it could be spent, where it would actually make an impact and provide change for the residents. I don't know what's happening. To me, the math ain't math, you understand? So, and that's why I asked about, um, the police officers.
About the money or about the names? Because the names, we can't, we won't discuss that in executive session. So is it about the funds or the, the votes?
It's about both.
Okay.
So, so...
It's about both, I just don't know, I, I mean, like, we come in and ask for a lot of things, I know I do. And like you said, you heard it from me before, but I'm going to ask, continue to ask the same questions until I get an answer, I never get an answer, or I wouldn't have to keep asking.
For the record, we do disclose that information out. Uh, this is what our fourth and fifth, uh, personnel resolution, so at the time prior to roll call, I do call out the resolution, and if you have noticed from the past meetings, I'm calling out the name and what the items are. Yeah, yeah, well, no, you will know, well, prior to roll call, I call out the resolution, I call out every name and what it's pertaining to, prior to the vote. So you will notice for, once it's approved, that it is posted online for you to see in full disclosure what it's pertaining to. So you will notice that. We can't give it to you now, because it is personnel matters. At the time of roll call, I call out what the items are pertaining to each item, and then they get to vote, itemizing it or in a consent vote. So you will hear that and, and look at that.
Okay, okay. I mean, I, I'm tired of feeling unsafe in Atlanta. Since nineteen sixty-eight, I don't feel safe here anymore. I don't feel safe going to my car at night to make or go into the store, because there, it's so dark out here. And because we have so many people, I don't know where they're coming from, or where they live, or why they out there.
Okay, Mr. Beaney?
No, it's just, um, an answer to your, uh, the question that Ms. King, uh, we just, uh, explained. Um, we also, just, you know, because I think this is part of the question, the question that you're, you're asking. Um, we're replacing, we, we've had some people who need retire, you know, um, leave to go for other jobs. So we have some openings that we had available, but instead of placing people in those positions, we try to, to serve money by promoting some people within. So it's a lot easier to promote somebody from within, going outside for the big salaries. Just most likely, then, make different smaller inquiries. So we are saving the city money with these, uh, the actions we're taking tonight. Saving the city a lot of money right now.
Thank you.
Okay, but provide the residents with some safety while you're saving the money.
That's a different, that's a different question.
We have no rights, and we still, irregardless of how many police you, you hire, and irregardless of how many you promote, and how much money you pay them, we still only have five people on the ground, day or night. We need more officers, especially at night, especially in life, they get a hundred and three calls a day. The math ain't math.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion to close, public caution?
Sure.
Call it favor. Madam Chair?
Uh, first is orders number fourteen, second reading, public hearing required. Amendment chapter two fourteen entitled Rent Control, City Code. Note, we're going to have to have two roll calls for this. The first roll call would be making the amendment to section, uh, two fifteen dash nineteen, uh, subsection A, where it is changing the number of members to five members and three alternates. It's also adding the language that the city will make the appointment by the mayor with the advice and consent of city council. So after public hearing, we're going to need two roll calls. One to amend it, and then one for roll call.
This is a non-substantial change, therefore it doesn't stop the second reading and the publishing, should it pass. Any questions, Council? Would anyone like to come up with a public hearing?
None, no.
Or four minutes, fourteen? Or what, or twice? May I have a motion to close for public hearing? May I have a second?
Second.
Call it favor. So now we're going to the amendment?
Yes, I need a motion to approve the amendment.
May I have a motion to approve the amendment?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, Council? Saying none?
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Amendment approved. I need a motion for roll call, please.
May I have a motion for roll call and a second? Motion.
Second.
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Order is adopted. Resolution one hundred eighty-five, authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a federal aid agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation?
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Swepson? I'm sorry, Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred eighty-six, authorizing addition of bus stops on County Roads for access shuttle services in the city?
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Swepson? I'm sorry, Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred eighty-seven, authorizing an advertisement requesting qualifications for a rent control board attorney?
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Fidelera?
Yes.
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred eighty-eight, authorizing an advertisement for requesting proposals for the civil service human resources consultant?
May I have a motion?
I move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred eighty-nine, authorizing emergency repair of fence damage at the Max Edson Complex located at Park Avenue?
May I have a motion? May I have a second? Make it second?
I'm sure.
Okay. One more call?
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred ninety, endorsing the drive urban in-prize zone five-year strategic plan, and authorizing the plan to be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Human Affairs for...
May I have a motion?
Second.
May I have a second? I mean, uh...
Fidelera?
I'm going to abstain since we just got it.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred ninety-one, awarded a professional services contract to Dan Zicker and Mar Hall, attorneys at law for the twenty twenty-four retiree medical act renewal evaluation?
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Second was who?
Yes.
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Fred, I mean, uh...
Uh, Thomas?
Yes.
Got caught, he's got busted.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred ninety-two, authorizing professional service contract to CME engineers, zoning ordinances, review pursuant to NJ SA forty-eight, colon eleven, dash one.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Uh, yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred ninety-three, providing for budgets and surges up to the twenty twenty-five budget.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Fidelera?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred ninety-one, approval of personnel transactions such as the building department, a stipend payment to the assistant zoning official, Shalana Stewart, in the amount of twenty-five hundred. To, uh, vet the agenda, order of the agenda?
I'll make the necessary motion.
Make a second?
All in favor? So we're going to take resolution one hundred and four into executive session.
Yeah, you want to go on?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Vote on the building?
I need a motion.
May I have a motion for the building?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Roll call?
Fidelera? Philis? Camona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvispy?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you want to go into, um, executive session? Okay, you want to take a, a five-minute break?
Yeah, five-minute break.
You want to, okay. Just go to, take a five-minute break, and then you'll come back, and then you'll move to executive session.
We're in line.
May I have a motion to come on to executive session?
Motion.
All in favor?
Okay, resolution one hundred ninety-four, authorizing personnel transactions to the city for October twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion for items?
For items, uh, for... Uh, for a stipend payment to, uh, zoning, uh, assistant zoning official, Shalana Stewart, for a provisional appointment, uh, to personnel?
Just a stipend?
Just a stipend. But I got to do three, I got to do...
You got to do the ten hours.
Oh, okay, okay.
I was on number three, I was number three. I didn't even... I'm working this.
That was the title that we were discussing.
Okay, so let's take it from the top. For the building department, a stipend payment, you want me to give that amount?
You should give the amount.
Twenty-five hundred. Approved stipend payment of two thousand five hundred dollar increase from January one, twenty twenty-five, to December third first, twenty twenty-five, to Shalana Stewart. Within the human resources department, approved provisional appointment of personnel officer for the salary increase of five thousand dollars to Charmaine Athens, with a new salary of sixty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-three, thirty-three cents, effective October the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Within the police department, approved the amendment payout of separated police officer, Jamal War, effective September the eighth, pursuant to the collective bargaining unit, and the total amount payout of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Also, within the police department, approved the employment status, uh, special law enforcement, class two, Mark Malard, from part-time to full-time, effective January one of this year, with the annual salary of thirty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
Not yet.
Lastly, recreation approved a salary increase of five thousand dollars to the recreation superintendent, Katrina Moby Dunn, with a new salary of seventy-two thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, effective October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Discussion.
Yes, on, on, uh, Officer Mark Malard, that was not agreed upon in the committee, that we said it was from the date that we approved it, not from January one, that would have made us responsible for that vacation time and all that stuff.
Okay.
But we made it a full-time, now it's from the date that we voted on it there, Mark Malard.
Yeah, so it was, it was supposed to... That's the, the...
It was supposed to reverse the whole process. And so now, we, that says that, like, if you go back to January the first, and we're saying, no, that, he goes full-time from the date we voted on, not January the first.
We're, we're, we're talking about the...
Mark Malard.
Through the class two.
What do you mean?
Yeah. So can you give me the effective date that's supposed to be?
We decided that in this committee, we agreed upon that it would take effect now, not to reverse what took effect... Well, I believe if you read that, it's the January one.
It does, that's the date I was given.
No, that's not, that's correct.
But he's been operating, he's been operating part-time this entire...[1614.13]